...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
House Mayor, West Burlington City Council order, roll call please.
Crowner?
Here.
Rowley?
Here.
Hightmeier?
Here.
Lee's?
I'm here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfectly prove the agenda.
Still move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda, items one through twelve, which are the minutes from the regular city council meeting on December sixth, two thousand seventeen, except Annie Nebergall's resignation from the fire department, except Cale Hightmeier's resignation from the fire department, approve the liquor license renewal for Broadway Grill, approve the payment to Quad City Analytical Services for laboratory testing, approve payment Southeast Iowa Regional Plan Commission for grant administration, services related to the wastewater treatment plan improvements, approve payment to Mississippi Valley Pump, approve payment to Denny's Auto Repair for vehicle repairs, approve payment to Burnet Municipal Water Works for water, approve payment to Moyn County Regional Waste Commission, approve the clerk's monthly financial report for November, and approve the claims list as per set in the amount of one million four hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred two dollars and seventy-three cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports, Dan, you got anything?
Um, just to remind you, if you haven't given me your goal-setting questionnaire, please do that. I've got all but two for electeds right now. They're starting to bug me about wanting me to put this together and send it to them, so if you could get that to me as quickly as possible, I'd appreciate it, and they would too. That's on the tenth, if you remember.
Anybody have anything for Dan? Well, the only thing, the other thing we have under administration is to, some oaths of office for newly-elected officials, so I want to invite Al and Royce to stand up and take the oath of office for newly-re-elected council members.
Let me just get out of the way.
So.
Aye, state your name.
Al Waterman.
Al Royce Hightmeier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the...
I think I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of councilman.
Discharge all the duties of the office of councilman.
Discharge all the duties of councilman, office councilman.
And the city of West Burlington, Iowa.
And the city of West Burlington, Iowa.
City of West Burlington, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Four years, right?
Thank you.
Alrighty, I think I have to be sworn out, too. I can't remember what that says, so I'll follow it.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, House Kate Trowson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
In the city of West Burlington, Iowa.
In the city of West Burlington, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you.
Congratulations to all three of you. Congratulations to all of you. Alrighty, Randy's not here. Anybody having anything for Public Works? Chief Newberry.
Five of our guys did cop with the shop with a cop, and that went over very well. They took, um, the kids from West Burlington Schools, they went out and bought their family things, and then the kids bought themselves a present. Like to thank the officers that they volunteer their time to make that go over very well, and all the kids had fun. We also went in with Walmart. Walmart is providing gift certificates for people that we pull over that are driving the safety way, seat belts on and taking turns. So we've given quite a few of those out. We have quite a few more to give out to people that are wearing their seat belts and obeying the speed signs, doing everything right, the safe drivers. So, if you get pulled over, it may not be for a ticket, it could be for something good. That's all I have.
That'd be a first.
Sure would, but it's happening.
I noticed Frank was out enjoying all of the lights that we have lit up in our city. There's a few streetlights that are out again. They want to go out and make a list.
We can do that. I'll have third shift start on that.
The LED Christmas lights are so bright that they turn off.
Well, I think we need them, streetlights. Corners are dark.
Anybody else? Else have anything for Frank? Chief Ryan?
On building side, working through my list of inspections. Tomorrow I'm pretty much going to be knocking out the five hundred block of Vernon Street with the apartments over there, so that's going to be a fun and long one. Um, I have noticed with a lot of our renters, and I've been pointing it out to them, they have the Kitty-type fire extinguishers, and there was a recall on those. Kitty recalled almost ten million of their fire extinguishers, so I've been pointing that out to them, and to make sure that they're putting the sales receipt on the extinguisher because they're only good for a year under the fire code when you use them in a commercial-type application like that. Um, on the fire side, the guys, the Firefighters Association went out, we do it every year, is participate in the Toys for Tots, and they went out a couple weeks ago and participated in that. Um, a lot of them got together, and then, uh, the association donates some money, and then they also collect the money that's been donated to Toys for Tots to go and make the purchases for Toys for Tots, and they take all the gifts out there and help out for a while at the site out at Westland Mall. And then also, um, tonight they're getting together, the fire association, um, they always sponsor a couple families, children in need up at the West Burlington School, and they're getting together tonight to do some Christmas shopping for those kids, to give them a good Christmas. So, other than that, we're trying to keep things under wraps.
They have anything for Sean? Alrighty.
Uh, just one question. With these two firefighters that resigned, what's our, um, number of firefighters we have?
We had twenty-four. That took us twenty-two, but we added three backs. We're at about twenty, I want to say we're in between twenty-four, twenty-five. Which is about where tend to hover at usually, since I've been on in oh-four.
Kelly, you got anything?
No.
Last one.
Still working on the budget. We'll start in January having our budget meetings. I guess we'll decide after our first meeting in January when to start having those, because the tenth we have our goal setting, so I don't know when we can start those.
Got any preliminary numbers? You can have on the third?
I don't know if we're going to get that far along. It's holiday week next week, too, on vacation for a couple days.
Rod, you got anything going on?
I don't, sir. Thank you very much.
Rick?
No, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Reese?
Um, no, other than I want to extend my sympathy to you and Dad, and the Moss family, and the loss of Rosie. She was a great West Burlington citizen. I'm sure she was your campaign manager for all these years.
Yeah, she was probably my biggest supporter.
She was.
No, I probably could never have had a better mother-in-law. I mean, I had two moms. One that gave me birth and nursed me through the first nineteen years, and then both of them the last forty-five years.
I know you needed to.
Yes, I needed. Well, thank you.
Well, she had a lot of friends, and a lot of people loved her because...
Yeah, about the last fifteen years, we really hadn't drank much beer together, but we put a lot of beer away. At our time. Anyway, alrighty, thank you very much. Um, anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did discuss or didn't discuss?
Alright, new business. I'm number one, is consider purchase of vehicle extragation clothes for the fire department, amount at twelve hundred dollars. I think I got that right?
So move.
Support. Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number two, is to consider purchase of turnout gear for the fire department, two sets for three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
I did have Jesse and Justin pick out a couple guys. Um, it's Taylor Moon and Zach Boyd, um, two of our more active guys, and also make a lot of the fire calls themselves. Taylor's got just a little going around, two years going on, and then Zach's been on for almost five years now, so.
Alrighty. Roll call.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number three, is to consider purchase of line tracer for the public works department, in the amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Still move?
Support.
Got a motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four, is a resolution authorizing and providing for an amendment to the loan agreement between said city and Southeastern Community College Foundation, providing for the repayment of loan of the proceeds of previously issued four million seven hundred fifty thousand aggregate principal amount of revenue bonds, Southeastern Community College Foundation Project Series two thousand sixteen, of the city of West Burlington, Iowa. I think this has got a lot of lawyer-lease talk in it, and probably has something to do with the new tax bills that are coming down, so Kevin, you want to say a few words, or you... yeah, move on up here.
Particularly, yes, to, um, new council members, because this is a great thank you to the city of West Burlington, but the new Hall of Sciences that's being built, is actually being built by the Southeastern Community College Foundation, which is a nonprofit. And so, in the, and this was done last year, in the federal legislation, it allowed for the bank to loan money to the foundation, and we're borrowing money against future pledges coming in, and so that way we can go ahead and get the academic building built. And so we did what's, uh, in a common layman's terms called a conduit loan, and so the loan went through the city of West Burlington, back to the foundation, no liability to the city of West Burlington, but allowed then the banks to receive that federal tax exempt. So the bottom line of that is, instead of a market rate, say probably about four and a half percent, we got an interest rate of two point six seven percent. So on a four million or so dollar loan is probably where we'll end up. That's a big difference, so thank you for doing that. And so then, um, going forward to, I guess, today, new federal legislation came out, the House side was to get rid of this for tax, for nonprofits' tax-exempt interest. The Senate version left it alone. Um, and so tomorrow, I've got a discussion with our attorney, but in case we need to go ahead and just pull that loan all the way down, because by the time June comes, the building will be done, we'll have the full loan out, we'll just go ahead and pull the loan down here in December, locking in two point six seven percent interest for the next number of years. And so this amendment just allows us to go ahead and pull it down, and then, uh, we'll sort through what the bill said. I'm following Allers and Cooney's advice, but, so we plan at least as of this time to go ahead and pull it down now, instead of potentially waiting till January, February, and then have a different interest rate. So, um, again, I just want to say thank you. Four point five percent versus two point six seven percent, you made that happen for SCC, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. So we've got a resolution in front of you.
Motion to approve.
Support, and thanks for explaining that.
Yeah.
Motion with support, any further discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Kevin. Merry Christmas. I'm number five, is consider payment to Lee Lander Construction for construction services related to the wastewater lift station improvements, in the amount of eight hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Got any updates? Everything going good?
It's been pretty fast. We're a little ahead of schedule, so.
Good. Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number six, is consider payment French Renticker Associates for engineering services related to the following: street projects, Broadway, fourteen thousand fifty-one dollars seventy-three cents, agency gear project, eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, Ruth Ellen Kimberly Melville, one thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
Did we get, I had to leave the last meeting. Did we get figured out whose expense and whose cost it was over there, or that redo that they had to do there on the corner? Did Matt said they didn't know whose fault it was? I believe it was a miss, the mistake was in the staking, so I think it's French Rentiker's dime.
Matt said, Matt said that they were...
And did that get all taken care of then and done? I believe it's done, yeah. Okay. They re, got that one redone. I think they have some work to do to come up and clean up the backs of the curbs and stuff, but they'll do that in the spring. Okay, but the engineering, the contractor got it all smoothed out, who was paying what? Uh, last, last I heard, it was French's problem, so. Alright, thanks.
Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number seven, is to consider first reading ordinance to amend chapter one fifty-five oh-five of the city code related to the rental housing inspector, and that's a, a name change from, uh, Development Service Coordinators to now Fire Chief slash Building Inspector.
Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number eight, is to consider second reading of an ordinance amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty applicable to certain sections of the code and violations thereof.
Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number nine, is consider second reading of an ordinance amending various penalty provisions of the code.
Still move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number ten, is consider second reading of an ordinance amending chapter three of the code pertaining to alternative penalties applicable to violations of specific sections of the city code.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number eleven, is consider amending personnel manual regarding employees' responsibility for medical costs outside of healthcare provider network.
My memo on that's pretty self-explanatory. With this new insurance policy, um, the gap between the insurance companies deductible and the city's deductible, we partially self-fund. If someone were to go outside of the network, that gap would get wider, the city would be responsible for more money. This change will make, uh, the employee a little bit more additionally responsible for going out of network. Anything in-network is still the same way as it always has been, but if you go out, you have to pay a little bit of extra money out of pocket if you choose to go out of network. And a, as of, you heard this two weeks ago, too, but the only place in the area that's currently out of network is Henry County.
Dubuque.
And Dubuque. There's only one person that goes to Dubuque. Emergency rooms in, though.
Yeah.
So you're good there.
But I go to Mount Pleasant.
Well, it's a pleasure here.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
So he'll pay forty dollars per month more? Is that what I'm reading?
No, it's, it, it's the deductible and out-of-pocket that's increasing. That forty dollars is currently in the personnel manual for everybody.
As one of the two employees, and it's my entire family that goes to Mount Pleasant, we've been using them for twenty-two years, I'm, we're willing to accept that, as, you know, that's part of the cost of doing business in a sense, but to be able to stay with our, the health provider that we've had, who was the doctor there for our three children, my wife and I, we've discussed this at great length, and we're, we're good with...
We're good with it.
Yeah, Dan and Leslie both spoke to me about it, and, um, you know, that works for us, so we can say, oh, no doctor, till you switch back to Blue Cross. Probably next year.
Could happen. Who knows?
What happened last time.
Yeah.
I can't speak for the other employee.
Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number twelve, is consider resolution approving a ten-year partial tax abatement for a commercial building in four thirteen Tri-Greek Avenue. Say Mr. Blumberger is building a new commercial building.
Everything in his application's in order, so...
He say what he's going to use it for?
Offices, right, Sean?
Uh, looking at future expansion to offices, he definitely is not looking for what's next door. Like to put in some type of a professional office in there.
Still move?
Probably men's health.
You said it, not me.
Still move? I got a motion. Support there?
Yep.
Motion with support.
I didn't hear either.
Rick made the motion, I don't know about...
Support, you support?
He made the motion, you supported it.
Roy supported. I think they're getting excited next door here. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Lee's?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number thirteen, is to consider renewal of property and casualty insurance.
Cody, you're up. I sent you this out in email, I also printed it for you and have it at the table.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, uh, thank you very much for, for having me. I, uh, I apologize, we got you the numbers a little later than we'd like to, but we were getting some, some different options for you tonight to try to help keep, keep the costs down, and I think we've done that in our proposal here this evening. Um, we have worked with, uh, the Iowa, Iowa Mutual Insurance Company through Continental Western Insurance as your guys' carrier for the last few years now, and we've had a very good relationship. Um, as you know, last year we did, uh, run a quote through EMC to see if we would like to change carriers, and after discussion it was decided that we would stay with Continental Western. Um, in regards to your two thousand seventeen policy, just a couple of house cleaning items, uh, we did see a, a very large year of losses. Um, unfortunately, it was, it was only three losses, but, but, uh, two of those were what we would call shock loss, which are, which are large losses. One of those was the water main line breaking at, uh, Westland Mall that had to be repaired. Um, and the other one was the automobile accident outside of Appella. That, uh, so, uh, what we're going to discuss tonight is the property casualty policy. This is not the workers' comp, that renews in July. Uh, but, uh, in regards to your losses, normally you'd want to keep your losses at about a forty percent loss ratio to the amount of premium that you spend. Uh, in this year, we were quite a bit over that due to a couple of large losses. Um, all of your claims as of two thousand seventeen are closed, so there are no open claims out there, everything's been paid. Um, but, but due to those losses, I, we did see a slight increase. Um, so what we've done to try to help keep your, your costs minimal as far as the increase, uh, one of the things I noticed is that your auto policy for your city package, um, has one thousand dollar comp deductible and a two thousand dollar collision deductible across the board, every vehicle. Uh, in regards to your fire pack, it was, uh, there was many different vehicles that had a five hundred dollar comp, five hundred dollar collision. Um, some had a five hundred dollar comp, thousand dollar collision. One of the things we discussed with your carrier is if we were to increase the deductibles on those fire vehicles to be more streamlined with what the city has with their police department and other city vehicles, what would that do? Um, and we did see, uh, by increasing those deductibles, it would give us a, an added savings of about thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen eighty-eight in savings. Um, another thing that we looked at was increasing the deductible for your property liability. Um, this is more of like a backup water sewer type liability claims. Uh, it's something that we haven't seen, you guys have a claim with for, for quite a while, and so that was able to save us some money by increasing that deductible. As Dan said earlier, uh, you guys have done a, a really good job of, if it's a small claim, of, of simply paying for it out of pocket and not turning it in, which helps keep your claims low. So, what I am presenting tonight is, uh, a five point one percent increase in total premium for, for two thousand eighteen. Um, your, your city policy, the city package was, came in at fifty thousand, uh, one eighty-nine, and your fire pack, uh, came in at eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, your city package had an increase of nine point six percent, fire pack had a decrease of ten point eight percent, and that's due to the, if you approved the deductible change, would give us quite a bit of savings. Uh, again, you guys do not have a lot of losses. Unfortunately, the losses that you had this year were, were substantial. Um, so, well, like I said, normally forty percent or less is a good year. This year, the city of West Burlington's claim ratio was about a hundred and fifty-five percent. So with a five point one percent increase, um, when the standard is four point one percent is the standard normal, uh, nationwide, I think, uh, Continental Western, after speaking with them, felt very good about the relationship with you guys, looking at your claims over the last five years. They know that obviously we had a couple bad losses, but, uh, you, you guys are not, uh, a bad client at all, so. Do any of you have any questions on that?
Yes.
Yeah? Yeah?
And having just got this whole packet of papers
Yes.
tonight in front of me, obviously I don't like that.
Yeah.
Cause it gives me no time to...
I apologize. I apologize.
I don't know whose fault it is, how it come.
It is mine. It is ours. We were trying to get the numbers back from Continental Western last week and obviously being, coming up on 1-1.
So when does this, when will this new policy take effect?
January 1st.
So it's a January 1 deadline?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're dealing with, okay.
Yes, sir.
The dwelling out on Mount Pleasant Street. I think it's still on here showing we're insuring that.
We took, we kept liability on it and we're taking everything else off.
Yes.
Okay. But I can't, where's that at? Okay. You know, in this quick time. I just see the address on here.
Yeah.
As a dwelling.
We still have some liability in there.
On this first part, I show the dwelling being, it says dwelling. It doesn't say...
So, yeah, so this list, the first part lists all the properties where we, addresses where we have liability coverage. So if somebody was on that property and got injured, we would keep that liability on. Now, if the property was to burn down, it was my understanding that we would just go ahead and take that building replacement coverage off, which is going to save you 300, I think about 344 dollars.
We're not insuring that building.
No, we are not.
As of January 1, at least?
It's on page 19, bottom of 19.
Okay. Well, I was trying to find it, but... Okay. Thank you.
So we're taking all the vehicles up then to $2,000 deductibles?
Actually, it would be one, so fire pack is what you have for your fire department. They do not have a $2,000 deductible, so they'd either be a 1,000 or a 2,500. So the city's vehicles would be 1,000 for a comp, which is what they currently are, $2,000 for a collision. So we would be increasing the comprehensive deductible, we would be doubling that from 500 to 1,000. For the collision, for the vehicles, some of them, like I said, it varies. Some of the vehicles have different collision deductibles. I think it would be wise for us to just have one straight deductible. And unfortunately, with the fire pack policy, they didn't have a $2,000 deductible, so they could do a $2,500 deductible. So while you would have a $2,500 deductible for your collision, it's looking at your claims history. It's not something that we have seen a lot of. Your biggest fear with this is obviously your comp with hail. You know, having a lot of vehicles in one area, if there was a hailstorm, as I discussed with Dan and Leslie, you know, in the event of bad weather, you know, most of the emergency vehicles are going out, staying in. But with the savings that it offered, it did help keep your premium renewal at around 5%. Which, you know, with your, with the increases, I thought would be a viable option.
Do I have any questions, Cody? I need a motion to approve the city pack at $50,189 and the fire pack at $11,535.
Motion approved.
Support? Motionless support. Any other discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Kate Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you, Cody. Do they have any old business? Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Support.
All those in favor?
Ayes.
Beings adjourned. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.